Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 5:30 PM meeting of Elmer Town Council of July the 10th. We begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you. Item three, confirmation of the agenda. We have a resolution?
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of July 10th, 2024, as amended by adding the following items: Correspondence from Roger Peters regarding zoning bylaw amendments, zero two dash twenty-four.
Moving to the second or... Councilor Ouslauch and Councilor Rahi. Any... From council? All those in favor? Ms. Carey, thank you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Delegations in public meetings? We have a public meeting under the Planning Act. And we need a resolution to enter the public meeting.
That council do now commence a public meeting at 5:32 PM to receive input from the public with respect to planning application for zoning bylaw amendment, ZBA zero two dash twenty-four.
Moving to the second or... Deputy Mayor Barber, Councilor Chapp. Do you have a...
Yes. This public meeting is taking place under the Planning Act 1990, as amended. At this public meeting, council will hear public representations regarding application for zoning bylaw, ZBA zero two dash twenty-four by Dem Mella Group Limited. Please note that those who do not provide comments or written submission prior to the decision of the appropriate authority may not be afforded the right to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Council will hear comments in the following order: the presentation of the staff report by the manager of planning and development, by the agent or applicants, by the public, and then by staff and the clerk.
Thank you. I need to call a vote on the resolution to enter the public meeting, which has just had a mover and a seconder. So all those in favor of entering the public meeting? Yes, Carey, thank you. So could the manager of planning and development please provide her report?
Thank you, your worship. The zoning bylaw amendment that's been submitted and is before you this evening is for 154 Talbot Street West. Essentially, what's happening on this property is that the owner has requested to add an additional permitted use on this property, that being a drive-through facility, specifically a drive-through restaurant. As well as part of this application, the owner is also cleaning up the parking situation that is currently on this property. Currently, there is angled parking kind of along the parking area along Ragland Street that actually encroaches into the Ragland Street road allowance. In the past, the owner has had a agreement with the town to be able to have this angled parking encroach into the town's road allowance. The owner is proposing to clean up the angled parking that is in the front area over by the bargain shop area and to change that parking. As a result of this, this will require a reduction in the parking from the required forty-nine spaces down to forty-two spaces. Figure one shows an aerial photograph of the subject lands. It's located at the... It's a corner lot located at the intersection of Talbot and Ragland Streets. It's actually a through lot. Wellington, or sorry, Sidneyham Street, my apologies. Sidneyham Street is to the south of it. The proposed drive-through restaurant use would be located in the area south of the bargain shop along the areas of Ragland Street and Sidneyham Street West. Figure two just shows a concept proposal for this property. It is not the final plan per se. It is just kind of showing kind of a proposal to show how roughly this development would lay out. In terms of planning policy review, I reviewed the provincial policy statement, the current one, as well as the proposed 2024. And this proposed application is consistent with the provincial policy statement. Moving on to the county's official plan. Given that the town of Elmer is a tier-one settlement area with full services, we can have a wide range of uses. The proposed use, which is commercial, is a permitted use. Therefore, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment conforms to the county's current official plan as well as the adopted official plan. Moving on to the town of Elmer official plan, the lands are designated Ontario Commercial. And within this designation, it's commercial land uses that are permitted. Mostly ones that require a high degree of access and visibility to vehicular traffic on made roads, including restaurants. So therefore, this proposed application to permit an additional commercial use, that being a drive-through restaurant, would be considered to be a permitted use for this property. It's important to note that this is already a partially developed commercial property with servicing already and accesses on this property. So therefore, the proposed application for the zoning bylaw amendment conforms to the town of Elmer official plan. Moving on to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. As I mentioned, what we're doing here is essentially adding an additional use on this property, that being a drive-through facility, specifically a drive-through restaurant. In terms of the angled parking and correcting this parking from angled parking to a regular parking lot layout for commercial use, the reduction from the forty-nine spaces to the forty-two spaces is appropriate in this area. And it's for a few reasons. First of all, within the town's zoning bylaw for parking regulations, we do not count the stocking lane in a drive-through facility as parking. So given that this has proposing a drive-through restaurant, there will be vehicles in that drive-through lane which will help alleviate some potential for parking issues as well as there will be a good majority of the people coming to this property not parking their vehicle, coming through the drive-through facility, utilizing it, and leaving. The second reason why it's justifiable is that there is a significant amount of on-street parking in this area along Talbot Street, excuse me, in front of the bargain shop, as well as along Ragland Street and as well on the south side of Sidneyham Street West. So in terms of other issues and matters, the proposed drive-through restaurant will be subject to site plan control, which will address such matters as servicing, stormwater management, parking, traffic issues, access, loading areas, outdoor lighting, and landscaping. The application was circulated internally to town staff and to all applicable public agencies. No comments of concern were submitted. The application was also circulated to all neighboring property owners within one hundred and twenty meters. At the time at which I submitted this report, I hadn't received any comments. However, I can note that I have received comments since then. The first set of comments I received was from Mary Jane Lampton, business owner at Mary Jane's Hair Design. She has concerns regarding the traffic at the intersection of Ragland and Talbot Streets in addition to the traffic created by the existing McDonald's restaurant in the close vicinity. She doesn't view the change as positive due to the likely negative impact on traffic creating by the zoning change. So in response to those comments, what I can state is that as part of the site plan approval process, a traffic impact study will be required and traffic in that area will be required to be studied and recommendations to be made and determined if this is appropriate use to be located there based on the study. In terms of the traffic at the McDonald's restaurant, unfortunately, that's an existing use that through this zoning bylaw amendment application, I don't have an ability to affect any change on. The second set of comments I received are received from Roger Peters. The first comment was seemed is supportive of the proposed drive-through restaurant. Their comments are they're requesting for bicycle parking to be added to the property and as well as making this development pedestrian and cyclist friendly, ensuring that there's that connectivity from the street and from the sidewalks, which is definitely things, design components that Terry and I will be looking for as a part of the site plan approval process. Because given the location and the connectivity, that is definitely items we feel is of great importance to this property. The second comment is they're requesting for a walk-up window for the restaurant to be an option. Unfortunately, I can't regulate whether the restaurant has a walk-up window. And this walk-up window, the intention would be to serve pedestrian and cyclist traffic kind of after hours because a lot of drive-through restaurants, the restaurants internally close earlier, keep the drive-through open. So they're requesting if there was some kind of walk-up window they could come up to during those kind of later or after hours. As I said, that's something unfortunately I can't regulate per se. What I can do is as part of the site plan approval process during pre-consultation with the owner, these are comments that I will definitely be sharing with the owner in asking for them to try their best to incorporate into the design and advise them that this is something that town residents are looking for. So going back to the remainder of my report. So in conclusion, it's the planning staff's opinion that the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is consistent with the provincial policy statement and it conforms to the county's official plan as well as the town's official plan and that the zoning bylaw amendment be approved, subject to no concerns being raised through any oral and written comments being received tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Just to be clear, you did add the proviso of a traffic study. Is... Does that mean that the traffic study would have to be approving of this development before final approval by council?
So the traffic impact study would be a part of the site plan approval process. And site plan approval is a process that are... That has been delegated to staff. So staff will ensure as part of this that if the traffic impact study comes back unfavorable, that this site plan approval application will not proceed.
Okay, thank you. Next item, the applicant or an agent present. If so, do they wish to speak? Applicant or an agent? No, see none? All right. Next, are there any members of the public which wish to speak to this application? Okay, if so, you've moved to the podium. Give your name, Steve.
My name's Steve. Stephen Blankenship, 108 Sidneyham Street West, Elmer, Ontario. Basically, I have some neighbors here today. But it's really hard to say where it starts, but the traffic study would obviously have to be the first point of interest because Sidneyham is basically a drag strip for people who want to avoid the light. And not only them, it's amazingly congested at times already. And as mentioned, the McDonald's drive-through and restaurant there, it has created a lot of congestion already for people entering and exiting the area of Wellington Street, Talbot Street, and Sidneyham. Sometimes there's cars parked right around the corner. There's no extra lane for them to park, so it's already congested already. And my neighbors that are here tonight will probably point out a few things, but I'll echo them to... The entrance to this proclaimed or restaurant-to-be, would it be Talbot Street, which already has a congestion from McDonald's, and you can see it already backed up and people trying to pull onto... Anyway, I can go into detail about it, but it's going to be a traffic problem to start, okay? Congestion and noise. The trash compactor already... People who live on the street, some people wouldn't know unless they live here, like my neighbors, say about four o'clock every morning, they pick up the... And dump the trash at the bargain store, McDonald's, and whatever. And whatever doesn't fit in the bucket blows right down our street, which is a litter problem already. My notes, I think I've pretty well covered it. Basically, I think it's a really bad idea, let alone the noise to the trash, the congestion. And the Elmer police would be called out so many times for little fender benders, I suppose, be a waste of time. But I'm definitely against the proposal.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any additional communications that we received other than those mentioned?
There might be some other members of the public.
Oh, there are other members, sorry. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak? Sorry, go ahead.
My name is Mark. I live directly behind the bargain shop. Concerns I have, like Steve brought up the traffic. It's bad enough trying to get out of my driveway sometimes.
Excuse me, Mark. Before we go ahead, can we have your last name?
Dorcas.
Thank you.
I live at 160 Sidneyham Street West. So as Steve brought up the traffic, sometimes it's almost impossible to get out of your driveway as it is with McDonald's and the bargain shop. My other concerns are what kind of lighting is going to be required? I don't want lights shining in my house all hours of the night, you know? So is that going to be an issue? The proposal sketch here shows the dumpsters about fifty feet off the front of my porch. I shouldn't have to smell of fast food garbage twenty-four hours a day. You know, the attraction of rodents, raccoons, rats, whatever. And as Steve brought up, when the garbage truck shows up at McDonald's there, four o'clock in the morning, they're bouncing the bins off the ground, the beeper of the truck, the even the speaker. I can hear the speaker from my place. And this one would be half the distance away from my house. So I'm concerned for all of that, and I think it's a bad idea. That's what I... That's where I'm at with this.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mark.
My name is James Farmer. I live at 123 Sidneyham Street West. This property will be directly east of us. And I've had enough issues going to work, going down to Wellington, days or I work days and afternoon shifts, with McDonald's. This one will be blocking my driveway. You don't think so? I know so. We don't know what type of restaurant it is, but it's going to cause issues. It's going to cause issues when it's spilt, it's going to cause issues with lighting. Yes, I hear the four o'clock in the morning garbage pickup. You people might know, it's, you know, you live that close to downtown, it's not a big deal. It is a big deal. No, none of us complain about when the street sweeper comes around at five in the morning, it's not a big deal. But four in the morning, when you hear that banging and it... Oh, the banging stopped, okay. And then all of a sudden, you hear the banging again. It's something. So we're going to have to put up with it three times. Then, as Mark said, you know, the smell. You get the smell every once in a while. It's like we're a little further away from the McDonald's one, but we get the smell. So I just think it's a very, very bad idea. I think it's going to cause more issues than anything. And as Steve said, there's going to be a lot of little fender benders. So you're going to have the police a little bit busier. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Are there any further communications?
No, there are no further.
Counsel, you have questions? Counselor Desrosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not really a question, more a statement. I think the comments that Mr. Peters brought forth regarding the cycling and pedestrian infrastructure, if they... If we are to proceed with this development, I think those are great comments to take into consideration and for a progressive approach. And then as far as the comments that have been made by our public delegates tonight about this development, I just want to thank them for taking the time to come and express their opinions, regardless if we agree or disagree. I think it's valuable to have public insight at a meeting. So thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship. To Heather, two questions. As far as the garbage pickup goes, you... I think everybody can appreciate four o'clock is an ungodly hour for trash to be picked up if it's in your neighborhood. Is there anything that we can do as far as bylaw goes that would make that a more respectable hour? And secondly, the plan doesn't really specify. It says a drive-in restaurant. Is there an eat-in component to that structure?
So thank you, Deputy Mayor Barber. Regarding your first question regarding the pickup at what I would also agree with the neighbors as an unreasonable hour. Do not believe there is anything in our bylaws that speak to the hours of garbage pickup. Am I correct, Terry? Yeah, I do not believe we have anything in the bylaw.
There might be some noise.
Okay. We can look into it in terms of noise. What we can do is is reach out to the owner of this property and ask him to see if there is... If he's able to work with his private garbage collector to see if there is a better time that can it be picked up on this property. But we will definitely, Terry and I will definitely look into the bylaw to see if there's an issue regarding noise. And I believe if it was a noise issue, it'll be... We have to determine if it's exceeding the decibel reading.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ouslauch?
Your worship, to Heather, is a property big enough for two commercial establishments?
Yes, it is.
It seemed like that to me. I don't know.
Counselor Desrosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question I just thought of as well that the public delegates brought up was the garbage pickup. According to the new design plan, it looks like they're relocating the garbage to like closer to Sidneyham. If I recall, that property currently, they have the garbage like more north towards the building. Are we also able to work with them to potentially relocate the garbage to have it the furthest distance away from Sidneyham?
Yes, we definitely can. So because the bargain shop and this use is all going to be on one property, they're not being proposed to being severed. So when we're looking at this site plan agreement, as part of that agreement, they would have to show the existing bargain shop building as well as the proposed building. And it does allow Terry and I an opportunity to work with them in terms of relocation of any outdoor storage or garbage facilities. So that is definitely something that we would take back to the owner and request for them to incorporate into the plan should this be approved.
I think we need more information on how this garbage system works. Owen, can you...
Just to speak to, I think it was, one of Deputy Mayor Barber, specific. That garbage pickup at four AM would not be allowable. I'm just reading the bylaw here at the moment, but it looks like seven AM would be the allowable time for that pickup. So we'll correspond with some of the residents there and definitely address that matter.
Counselor Van Rys?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And to Heather, listening to some of the concerns of the residents, garbage is only one of the issues, but there's concerns about lighting and the traffic. Is there anything in the planning where we can ensure that there's as minimal of impact on the neighbors as possible in terms of like, I wouldn't want lights shining in my living room or bedroom all hours of the night. And I can understand how this could potentially be a traffic issue. I don't know, like I know Ragland's a one-way street. I don't know if that can be utilized at all in the planning. Yeah, do we have options just to make sure that it's, if we move forward with this, it's as minimal of impact as possible?
Terry?
Maybe I can answer that one. Through your worship to Counselor Van Rys. So we would require a photometric study done with this, much like the traffic impact study to illustrate where all the lights are. They would give the lighting values for whatever they're proposing, whether they're LEDs. They can put different shields on them to keep the light pollution, it's called, from exiting the site. So we would definitely want to see a complete photometric study for this, for the proposed design. Keep in mind, this is just conceptual at this point, so they would need to do their lighting design appropriately and then provide those calculations to ensure it's not escaping the site, if you will, the light. The light escaping the site.
Follow-up if you don't? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once all that information is gathered, will the public have an opportunity to hear about that as well and speak to it? Like will we be able to update them? Or I'm just thinking of the next steps. Even the traffic study?
Through your worship, no, generally not. The site plan is... The site plan is usually delegated to staff, so we would take those reports, ensure that they're accurate and they're meeting all the requirements. reports, ensure that they're accurate and they're meeting all the requirements, and ensure that the design meets our design requirements, which includes traffic, lighting, garbage, all of these issues that have been brought up. They'll need to be addressed accordingly on the site plan.
Just, again, to be clear, if those items are not addressed in the site plan, then it would be denied, correct?
Should there be a disagreement on the site plan between town staff and the owner, town staff would be bringing the agreement to council, for council to help address this matter.
So, it would come back to council if there is non-fulfillment of some of these requests?
So, maybe I can just add, the reason that the site plan's delegated to staff was that the province legislated that, and within our delegation, we added the ability for the manager of planning to bring it back to council if we get into those issues, because we don't want to cause problems for the community or for council. We want your input on these matters.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else, Deputy Mayor Barber?
Just a quick follow-up to my original question, Your Worship. Now that we know that 7:00 is a reasonable time or could be considered to be a reasonable time, can we ensure that the appropriate people will follow up with the other businesses to be consistent?
Throw that back at you. Yes, through the mayor, to Deputy Mayor Barber, I'd like some, I'm just reviewing the bylaw now to see if that is the time. I'm just not sure if it's applicable in that zone. We will follow up on the matter, though.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Chapman.
Through your worship, to Heather, I just want to confirm, the entrance to this facility would be off of Talbot and exit off of Sidonham?
So, this is just a conceptual plan right now. What the owner is conceptually proposing is that the entrance and exits would come off of Sidonham Street West.
And that, if I may, that entrance and exit would be part of the site plan that you would look at through the traffic study?
That is correct. This entire property would be studied as part of the traffic impact study to determine where is the best access in and out of this property. It may not be Sidonham, it may be another location that is better able to accommodate the traffic volume.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from council? Okay. So, I will, do we need to read the resolution again? I think it's fairly straightforward. Let's read it again.
So, the resolution would be to end the public meeting. So, the resolution is that council do now close this public meeting at 5:59 PM and reconvene the meeting of council.
So, this vote is on the exiting the public meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Mover in, secondor? Counselor Disrosi, Counselor Rahi, all those in favor, is carried. Now, we go back to the resolution.
And the resolution reads that report Plan 20-24, Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment, ZBA 02-24, be received, and that the council of the Town of Elmer approve the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, ZBA 02-24, in accordance with bylaw 50-24.
Mover in, secondor?
Clarification, Your Worship?
Clarification, Your Worship. It didn't mention anything about the site plan. I understand that it's part of the process, but can it be part of the resolution, the site plan and the traffic study?
Andy, I think you talked about the site plan and how it fits into the whole mold. Can you explain that again?
Sure. For councils, I guess what's before us here is the zoning change right now, tonight. Certainly, if we do encounter issues with the site plan, I have faith that Heather will determine that they're of significant nature to bring them to council's attention, and it will come back for you independently for review and approval. Thank you.
Okay. So, you're clear on that? If there are disagreements in the site plan, it will come back to us. Okay. Okay, we have a mover and a secondor for the resolution?
We do not have a secondor.
We didn't get a secondor, thank you. We had a mover and a secondor. Counselor Van Rys. So, all those in favor? All those opposed? The motion is defeated. Now, we need a resolution to enter another public meeting.
That council do now commence a public meeting at 6:01 PM to receive input from the public with respect to Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment, ZBA 03-24.
All those in favor? Is carried. We are now in a public meeting. Did we have a mover and a secondor? Did I forget that? Oh, I'm forgetting everything tonight. So, let's do this again. We're going into the public meeting, so I need a mover and a secondor. Counselor Van Rys and Counselor Oslach, and we will ask for the vote again to go into public meeting. All those in favor? And carried, thank you. And now, you go through your list.
Yes, this public meeting is taking place under the Planning Act. At this public meeting, council will hear representations regarding application for zoning bylaw amendments, ZBA 03-24, by Donald and Hilda Elliott. Council will hear comments in the following order again, presentation of the staff report, agents, the public, and then staff and the clerk.
Manager of Planning and Development, your report, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. The zoning bylaw amendment application for 81 South Street West is to rezone the subject lands from residential type 1B zone to residential type 1B zone, special provision 7, to permit the construction of an proposed accessory building with two additional residential units within the building, as well as to increase the maximum accessory building height from 5.5 meters to 6.71 meters. It's important for you to be aware that changes made to the Planning Act as a result of Bill 185 permit only one additional residential unit as of right. Therefore, the property owners, due to their request, were required to apply for a zoning bylaw amendment. Figure 1 shows the location, aerial photograph shows the location of the property. Figure 2 kind of shows the layout of the property with the current house and the proposed detached garage that would contain the two additional residential units. And those units would be above the detached garage on the second floor. In terms of planning policy review, I reviewed the provincial policy statements, both 2020 and 2024, and I can conclude that this proposed application is consistent with the current provincial policy statement and consistent with the proposed provincial policy statement 2024, and especially in the direction that the government is going in and supporting and encouraging additional residential units. Moving on to the county's official plan, the Town of Elmer's designated Tier 1 settlement area, as I mentioned in my previous public meeting, it allows for a variety of land uses. This type of use is a permitted use within the county's official plan. Therefore, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment conforms to the county's current plan as well as the adopted plan of 2024. Moving on to the Town of Elmer official plan, this property is designated low-density residential in the town's plan. Within our official plan, we do have objectives to, that promotes intensification and redevelopment of properties in existing residential areas. Redevelopment proposals will, to the satisfaction of council, ensure that the residential character of the area is to be maintained or enhanced and not present a burden to existing facilities and services. In terms of the proposed accessory building, as I mentioned, two additional residential units are proposed on the second floor. This property is already serviced with full municipal services and can continue to be serviced. That way, there is sufficient area on the property to accommodate the parking requirements, which is one parking space per each additional residential unit. So, therefore, and as well, given that the proposed accessory building is to be located in the rear yard of this property, it is, it will look, it will look like a detached garage, as you would see commonly in any other single detached dwelling property in town. The residential character of the area will continue to be maintained. So, therefore, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application conforms to the town's official plan. My apologies. Moving on to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, as I mentioned, we are, this rezoning is to add the additional, two additional residential units, as well as to increase the height for the building. And the request for the increase in the height in the building is essentially to be able to permit these two additional units on the second floor and to meet the building code requirements for the height that's required. The, as I mentioned, the additional residential units are appropriate for the lands, we are able to meet the parking requirements, and the request for the additional height to accommodate the building for the additional residential units is a moderate increase. In terms of other issues or matters, prior to the issuance of a building permit, should this application be approved, the owners will be required to apply for and be issued a site alteration permit, and this would be to address the lock reading, stormwater management on the property. The application was circulated internally to town staff and to all applicable public agencies. No comments of concern were submitted. The application was also circulated, excuse me, to all neighboring property owners within 120 meters of the property, at the time of which I wrote this report, I had received no concerns. I can state, however, that I did have Cynthia Grant, as well as Steve Blankenship, reach out to me, and they identified to me in their email that they intended to provide verbal comments to council this evening regarding the application. So, in conclusion, it's the planning staff's opinion that the proposed application is consistent with the provincial policy statement, and it conforms to the county's official plans and the town's official plan, and that the zoning bylaw amendment be approved, subject to no concerns being raised tonight in the public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Is the applicant or agent present? Okay. Don't see him or her. Any members of the public wish to speak to this application? Okay. Please come forward and give your first and last name.
Cynthia Grant. I did submit a written commentary, but I guess it wasn't received yesterday.
I didn't receive any comment.
The request is not a minor variance. When you request a zoning change, I would begin by stating that. I find the language around this kind of shocking in that it's been very clear that we're a community of residences where people have the right to build one unit in their backyard or adjacent to their properties. It's a slippery slope when you start allowing people to cram in a second residence with two units. It's not clear whether those units are going to be commercial. The sketch, when shown to architects, was very confusing. There's no indication of windows. People at the rear of the property, they're the only neighbors I was able to talk to, are very concerned about the placement of windows and having people look in on their backyard. The wife wished to sign a document, which I do have, so perhaps I, I thought my document was already on the record. So, there are a number of problems with this, the biggest of which is what kind of precedent is being set. And I keep hearing Elmer speak of intensification and saving the province housing-wise. I lived in Toronto for decades. I get when it, intensification, but it's not up to Elmer to solve it by putting two units in the backyard of people's property. It'll be a growing trend if you permit this, in my opinion. And I believe the plans right now are pretty inadequate to support it. So, I object.
Okay, thank you. Next, have we received any other communication? Oh, I'm sorry, is someone else?
All your worship and counsel.
My particular interest was not in this proposal, it was in the first one on the agenda. I think there was some confusion, Heather.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Cynthia, did you have something else to add?
I just have a copy of what I thought I had sent in, which would spare you my ramblings. How might I submit it for review, or can I not?
Heather.
Like, it's written, fine.
You can absolutely submit it right now, and as well, the oral comments that you provided to council this evening have also been submitted.
Well, initially, I stated that whereas I shared a fence with the property, I did not receive notification. So, I clearly was within 120 meters. So, that, right from the get-go, it put me in a very awkward position. So, it's excessive and definitely exceeds the allowable build for the current zoning of capital L, low, capital D, density residential. We live in different parts of the town, and those parts that are designated low-density residential should continue to be so, or throw it all out. The main residence at that property has been established as a single-family dwelling since it was built in the mid-1900s. The proposal suggests an attempt to commercially utilize the property for rental units, though this is not specified in their proposal. A cursory review by architects found the drawings confusing in many respects without indications of windows or clarity around setbacks and other related matters. The town must protect the integrity and character of our neighborhoods. Current zoning for the property would allow for one additional residential unit on the property. The proposed, quote, "construction of two additional residential units in a proposed accessory building" would set a dangerous precedent. Therefore, this should not go forward.
Thank you again, Cynthia. Anyone else wish to speak? All right. Clerk, received any other communication?
No further were received.
Heather, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, I just want to provide a couple of responses to some of the things that Cynthia brought up in her letter. First of all, I never received that letter. I'm very sorry, I don't know why, but I never did receive that. Had I received it, I definitely would have presented it to council in advance of this meeting and read it out fully. In terms of the questions about the use of these additional residential units and are these going to be commercial units, the reason, the owners, the owners expressed to me the reasons why they are proposing these additional residential units is for family members. One, for a child of theirs, and two, for a grandchild of theirs, for somewhere for them to live. And in particular, one, for them to live full-time on the property, and the second one, to live on a part-time basis. So, they're trying to provide housing for their family, not to provide commercial units. In terms of the size of these units, they're proposing two additional residential units for a total of 800 square feet. So, each unit is only going to be 400 square feet, which is a very small, what I'd classify as like a studio or bachelor-style apartment. So, these are not large units that are being proposed whatsoever. In terms of Cynthia's concern regarding not receiving the notice of the public meeting, I did receive, I think she sent a request in through our website, through LaserFiche, I did get that. I did look into that, and I did discover that unfortunately, she was not on the mailing list. This mailing list is generated through the Elgin County GIS system, through the mapping. I have looked into this. I have also reached out to Elgin County to identify that this was, this individual was missed. They've indicated to me that they are awaiting more information from Impact to update their GIS layer. I've said to them that it's not acceptable, we need to come up with another way in which, if we do not have appropriate ownership information, we need to still send a letter to these property owners, and it needs to be captured as part of this list. That Elgin County is aware of that, and they have advised me that they will be fixing this. So, my great apologies to Ms. Grant regarding that. That's also the reason why posting a public meeting sign on a property, which I do for every single property, also helps to facilitate, should there be someone missed in a circulation or someone who feels that they have a concern about the development and they are outside the 120-meter circulation area. So, the signage also does a great job, and that sign was in fact posted on the property by myself. Not certain if there's any other things I can speak to. I'm not certain if there's any other things I can speak to. In terms of the design of the building, that is not a requirement for a zoning bylaw amendment to submit detailed building designs. The owner only just provided a conceptual drawing, kind of showing roughly what it may look like. They are still working with their builder and are waiting to see if council will even support their application before they go and spend the money to have detailed architectural building drawings. So what was submitted to the neighborhood, to the neighboring property owners, was just a concept. It is not the final product. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Counselor Chapman.
Through you, your worship. My concern is, this is a very congested area already, and by adding two residents, it's going to make it even worse. This is the corridor that the children walk to and from school, and there's buses on a regular basis, and I can tell you that sitting at the corner of Forte and South Street at, between 8:20 and 8:40 every morning, is a very difficult turn to make with the children and the traffic and everything. So adding two residential units to that area is just too much more congestion.
Counselor Roselatch.
Your worship to Heather. When the children grow up and move out, that the units can be rented, at least?
Yes, they, they could absolutely be rented.
Is it public?
Absolutely, or even if the, these people sell their property, yes, it can still be rented. That's correct.
Counselor Van Reyes.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's more of just general comments, because I can see some of the concerns and some of the concerns of the neighbors. I believe we recently had an application come to council regarding a property that was higher than allowed and had some concern by neighbors. Congestion could be another one if it's rented out, but on the other side, I look at it, a family that's, like, housing is, is a crisis right now across everywhere. Like, you, you can't find any housing if you want to try to rent. So having a family that is trying to provide options for their family members, that will probably, probably be affordable housing for them, it's, it's hard to go against that when, if it's, if they have the space and it's going to be a minimal impact. Now, yeah, we, we don't want everybody building secondary units on their property throughout Elmer, because that's really going to get congested. But in my line of work, I'm currently working with families who are trying to find affordable housing. Now it's more for vulnerable people that are, that need support, and I don't know anything about this family, but maybe they do need additional support, or maybe it's just affordable housing. I'm currently working, trying to get a, a vulnerable person off the streets that's living in a tent. So when I hear situations like this, where they're trying to provide something and it may have minimal impact on the neighbors, yeah, I, I wouldn't want a neighbor looking in my backyard either, but I do have neighbors that have decks that are higher, they can see in my backyard. That, that's part of where I live. It's hard for me to say no to this if it's going to help, help family members.
Counselor, Rahe first, and then Counselor.
Just a comment to you, Mr. Mayor. I, I disagree with the height. You put it in, in the middle of all those backyards. I, I agree with Counselor Van Reyes. 22 feet up in the air, though, you're seeing over top of people's single-dwelling houses, like, I, I disagree with the height. I, I do think putting secondary residents in garages, if you, if you will, are kind of, it is a good idea to utilize space. Makes me feel like you're making people live in a chicken coop, but it is an option. There is a problem, but I disagree with the height. I think it should stay a, a, a single, or stay underneath our, our bylaws. That's it, thanks.
Counselor just rose here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to pivot off of Counselor Rahe and Counselor Van Reyes' comments, very similar. I understand that housing is a crisis and that, you know, there are certain individuals who desperately need this housing. But in my viewpoint, when it comes to planning, it's hard to justify it case by case. What you do for one, essentially, in my opinion, you, you should do for all. So based off the decision we made on our last meeting, I agree with Counselor Rahe that that is an excessive height, just as I did at the last meeting. So i-if we're, if there's some way we can meet in the middle, where perhaps there isn't a garage, but just a low, like, it's just the residential apartment, instead of two, it's one, and that a grandchild can live with the parents until, you know, it's just temporary anyways, or whatever we can do to somehow meet in the middle, because I feel like what we do for one, we should do for all. We can't treat every scenario case by case. It's planning. It should be black and white, period.
Counselor Chapman.
I have to agree with that. You, you can't make exceptions. I mean, yes, it pulls at my heartstrings that there's two individuals that need, need housing. However, we cannot change our community for each case. If, if that was the case, then, then each one of us could have a similar unit in the back of our home, saying that we need to provide for our family. And then, when they move out, you can use it as commercial rentals. So I have to agree, the height i-is not acceptable, and that there should be no more than one unit.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, your worship. A couple of questions for Heather. The existing garage that's on the property is going to be removed, correct?
That is correct, your worship.
Where is the parking going to be allocated?
So parking, so this property requires a total of four parking spaces, so they'll be utilizing the proposed space in the garage, as well as the driveway, for the three additional cars.
So if one car is at the back, there are going to be three in front?
This is a property, everyone knows each other. We, there is enough space too wide in the driveway to put two cars in side by side.
Okay. My thought process on this application, first of all, from a planning perspective and to follow provincial policy statements, the applicant has a strong case. They're following all of the rules of the, the guidelines of the province. From a municipal perspective, there is precedent that we have established that was not favorable to an over-height building. And as always been men, already been mentioned by a couple of counselors, what we do for one, we do for others. To go back and forth is not fair to anybody, and that has to have some bearing in our, our decision. Thank you.
Counselor Roselatch.
Your worship to Heather. I, 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 I am in favor, one unit, 800 square feet. Why can the children live together? They're family.
And that may be the option that they may have to pursue, but this was what they were wanting to apply for and see if council would be, would consider it.
This kind of application is the, the future of development. The province has made it very easy to add up to three units for every house in this town, in every town. So when we talk about one, you know, we talk about a residential unit as being one family, that is going to change. Now, I agree with the comments that were made here, that we need to have some kind of a consistency in what we approve. And so just asking Heather, the fact that the family is going to live in there makes no difference in terms of the legality of the, of the application, does it?
That is correct, your worship.
Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, we will move out of public meeting with a resolution.
That council do now close this public meeting at 6:25 PM and reconvene the meeting of council.
Mover in second, there. Counselor just rose here, Counselor Chapman, all those in favor, has carried now the resolution.
That report Plan 21-24 regarding Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment, ZBA 03-24 be received, and that the council of the town of Elmer approve the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, ZBA 03-24, in accordance with bylaw 5124.
Mover in second, there. Deputy Mayor Barber, and seconded by Counselor Van Reyes. So the resolution for this application is on the table. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution. All those opposed, resolution is defeated. All right, we need a resolution to enter another public meeting.
That council do now commence a public meeting at 6:26 PM to receive public input regarding Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment, ZBA 04-24.
Mover in second, there. Counselor Rahe, Counselor Chapman, all those in favor, has carried, and your statements.
Yes. This public meeting under the Planning Act 1990 is convened to hear public representations regarding zoning bylaw amendment 0424 by Mike Hutchinson Properties, represented by Brad Akers. Those who do not permit, provide comments or written submission prior to the decision of the appropriate authority may not be afforded the right to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Council will hear comments in the following order, presentation of the staff report by the manager of planning and development, agent or applicant, the public, and staff and the clerk.
Thank you. Manager of Planning and Development, your report, please.
Thank you, your worship. This application before you is to rezone the subject lands to essentially add an additional permitted use, that being a restaurant. The subject lands contain a commercial building that has a convenience store and formerly had a subway restaurant. The proposed restaurant will be located in the former subway restaurant space within the building. There is no additions proposed to this building. Property is located on the northeast corner of Talbot Street West and Elm Street. And just so you know, the restaurant that'll be going in here will be Barburito Restaurants, Inc. Figure one shows the aerial photograph showing the location of the subject lands. Figure two just shows kind of the layout of the property. This is the drawing that was submitted. Essentially, this is what you would see today on the property, the detail that you see in this drawing. Terms of planning policy review, this proposed application is consistent with the provincial policy statement, as this is an existing, as this is a commercially-zoned property, and the restaurant is locating within an existing commercial building. So therefore, the application is consistent with the provincial policy statement. Terms of the county's official plan, I reviewed the policies that apply and that this proposed zoning bylaw amendment conforms to the current county of Elgin official plan and the newly adopted county official plan. Moving on to the town of Elmer official plan, this property is designated neighborhood commercial, within the neighborhood commercial designation, commercial uses that meet the daily or weekly convenience, shopping, and service needs of nearby residents is permitted. Some examples that are given within the official plan are variety stores, hairdressers, medical, dental offices, and similar establishments. This proposed application to permit a restaurant within this existing commercial building meets the requirements of being a neighborhood commercial use. So therefore, the proposed application for the zoning bylaw amendment conforms to the town's official plan. Moving on to the town of Elmer zoning bylaw, this property already has site-specific zoning. It is neighborhood commercial zone, special provision one, C4-1. Within the C4-1 zone, what you see before you is the current list of permitted uses on this property, as well as the list of regulations on this property. This property has a bit of a history that I was able to dig up through our files here at the town. The subject lands were originally zoned in 1991 to permit a donut shop, coffee shop, and a gas bar, and a commercial building was constructed. From what I've been able to find out, and from my own local knowledge, I believe there's never been a gas bar at this property. In 2003, a zoning bylaw amendment was approved, applied for by the current owner and approved for the subject lands, which permits the current C4-1 zoning. As well as part of that 2003 application, in addition, was added to the building, which allowed for the existing convenience store that you currently see there at this property. It's my understanding in around 2013, or in around that area, the donut shop was converted into a subway restaurant. Within the definition of a convenience store, in the zoning bylaw, a delicatessen is listed as a permitted use, which would have essentially allowed that subway restaurant. Unfortunately, with this proposed use, that being a restaurant, it does not meet the requirements of a delicatessen. Therefore, the zoning needed to be corrected on this property to permit a restaurant as a right. It's important to note that the proposed use will be located within the former subway restaurant space, and that this building has had a longstanding use for the serving of food and drinks. The existing parking spaces on the property will be sufficient for the existing convenience store and the proposed restaurant use. As I've already shown you in the zoning bylaw, that parking has been reduced by about four spaces. It is appropriate, given the location of the area and the majority of the people that it would be serving, that being the East Elgin Secondary School, which would be frequenting this business quite a bit. The application was circulated internally to town staff and to all applicable public agencies, and no comments of concern were submitted. The application was also circulated to all the neighboring property owners within 120 meters, as well as a sign posted on the property, and no comments were submitted at the time of submission of this report, and I've also not received any further comments. In conclusion, it's the planning staff's opinion that the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is consistent with the provincial policy statement, and it conforms to the county's official plan and the town's official plan, and that the zoning bylaw amendment be approved, subject to no concerns coming forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Is the applicant or agent present?
Yes, Brad Akers, the applicant, or?
He is the agent.
The agent.
Agent.
Is he appearing virtually?
Virtually.
Hi, there. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, your honors. This is Brad Akers, representing Barburito Restaurants, as the agent for the applicant.
Did you wish to make statements?
No, I just wanted to confirm that everything that Heather said is as per our terms. We would like to get this agreement in place. Not being a delicatessen, by definition, this rezoning or bylaw amendment is required. We do serve fresh Mexican grill cuisine, and would love to be in Elmer.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Did we receive any other communication?
No further communications were received.
I forgot to ask if there were members of the public who wish to speak to this. Okay, don't see any. And we have received no other communication, so council, questions, comments? Counselor Chapman.
Through you, your worship. I just have one question. Is it possible that the, the entrance and exit on Talbot Street become only an entrance, and that they must leave off of Elm Street? Because it does create a bit of chaos at the stoplight there, with the exit being so close to the light?
Who would like to answer that?
I can go for that one. So this application is to rezone the property to permit the use. In terms of changing accesses, that is something that we can do through site plan approval. Technically, this property would not require site plan approval, because they're not proposing any changes in the parking areas, the outdoor storage, any additions. I believe we could request for a change of access, but I would have to look into that. It's a bit of a legal question. I would have to maybe perhaps ask our solicitor if I can, if I can ask, if I can do that.
Isn't Talbot Street a provincial highway, provincial road?
We issue our own permits within the controlled corridor. Am I correct, Terry?
Yeah, we, we have it under the connecting links agreement.
Connecting link.
Many area that's within the town of Elmer under that agreement.
Anyone else want to comment on this particular issue? Just a question. Counselor Roselatch is about this? Is it about the access from Talbot Street to Talbot?
No, no, no. I have another, another question.
Okay, so if there's no other discussion on that, go ahead.
Well, your worship to Heather, I'm confused. The subway was a delicatessen, delicatessen? And what is it a meaning of, a meaning of a delicatessen?
So I had to look this up in great detail. I went through a lot of our files here at the town, trying to figure this out. Essentially, from what I could find in searching the files, as well as searching the duffin of a delicatessen, delicatessen is basically, it's the serving of, it's basically, you're not cooking, you're not cooking food. You're preparing essentially a cold sandwich using cold cuts, breads, cheeses, whereas this type of restaurant is, requires the cooking of meats, rice, beans, et cetera, in order to prepare a finished product for the public to consume. Essentially, the reason why delicatessens have, and I've seen this before in other zoning bylaws, the reason why delicatessens are definitely, are generally permitted within a convenience store is a lot of times you'll see, like, for instance, I've seen this in smaller communities that have more independent convenience stores, where they'll have like a small little deli counter, offering like a sandwich to the, to the traveling public to come in, as well as maybe dessert or whatnot. And that's what I believe the intention is for that type of definition.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Worship. Councillor Oslach asked my question, what's the difference between a subway delicatessen and a burrito restaurant? But, okay, one's cooked, one's not. As far as the entrance onto Talbot Street, maybe a simple solution would be to prohibit left-hand turns, or in other words, turning left, just make it a right turn only. The, the problem, the congestion, is when somebody tries to go eastbound from the, from the restaurant, or from the convenience store. Just my thought.
Anyone want to tackle that at all? I guess I'm reminding council that all we're talking about really is changing the inside of the building. The outside, at this point, is not part of this resolution. But, you know, you make a good point about the fact that that particular entrance off Talbot Street is so close to the stoplight, it leads to incredible congestion. It's called the Saint Thomas Solution. If you've ever been in Saint Thomas, every, it seems every eating establishment has one of those right before the, before you get into it. But the resolution really calls only for changing the inside of this building. Any other comments? I think, just coming back to Councillor Chapman's point, I think it would be useful if staff did look into what we can do with, with that particular issue right there, because I think it would help in the future. So it's a good point, so let's see if, you know, have staff look at that. Okay. Any other comments? All right, no further discussion, we'll adjourn the public meeting, and...
That council...
Go ahead.
That council do now close the public meeting at six-thirty-nine P.M. And reconvene the meeting of council.
Mover and secondor, Councillor Dussroux, Councillor Rahe, all those in favor, as carried, now the resolution.
That report Plan twenty-two dash twenty-four regarding Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment, ZBA zero-four dash twenty-four be received, and that the council of the Town of Elmer approve the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, ZBA zero-four dash twenty-four, in accordance with bylaw fifty-two dash twenty-four.
Mover and secondor, Councillor Chapman and Councillor Oslach. Any further discussion? I just have one comment. I remember Heather saying that she did study of the history of that particular area, and I remember the history well, because in my former life, I would have to check out students who are taking Donut One-O-One instead of Math One-O-One. Any further comment? All those in favor, as carried, thank you. So the next item is... Five point two, thank you very much. Which are delegations, and the first delegation is Cynthia Grant regarding the Old Town Hall. Cynthia.
So as you know, I came to the last meeting, but wasn't allowed to speak because I wasn't on the agenda. At any rate, I requested to delegate to council today for several reasons. One reason involves the significant voices present at the roundtable discussion, who were clear in their calls for action from the town council. Prior to this meeting, I had the pleasure of attending a pre-meeting, at which the A-PAC, Elmer Performing Arts Council, Board of Directors presented a document, much like this, that outlined the weaknesses, strengths, and opportunities presented by the town hall. They, in fact, are the major users of the town hall at this point, and bring in hundreds of people for each concert. Well, not hundreds, it's a hundred and sixty or whatever. In fact, their document contains far more analysis and detailed consideration than the report prepared by staff subsequent to the roundtable. Many at the roundtable discussion found the process of the facilitated meeting insulting, insofar as those very same people had not been asked over the years for their opinions or their analysis, and suggest, or their analysis and suggestions had been ignored. There was suspicion in the room about the motives of the town. What's the hidden agenda? Is the plan to sell the building? The substance and suggestions made by citizens of that meeting were far more than what has been reported here to council. Citizens have a vision for the Town of Elmer, one that includes an expanded library and a town hall performance venue better suited to the needs of not only A-PAC, but the many other potential users of the space. We have a vision of a cultural hub in downtown Elmer, a vision that we believe could receive funds from a variety of sources, both private and public. We hope that the town officials will open their vision to such a possibility. First and foremost, in terms of this vision, we must address the library. A vast number of the citizens of Elmer are frustrated with being denied the library space that a town of our size is assessed for. We want a library of reasonable size to provide the service that all Ontarians deserve, and to which we are entitled. For far too long, Elmer has functioned with inadequate space, space for which the county would provide more than a hundred and eighty thousand additional dollars annually. That's one million and eight hundred thousand that could have been taken into the Town of Elmer's coffers over the past decade, if we'd had the space to which we are entitled. Think about that. This has lost revenue each and every year, revenue that would sustain the majority of the costs of the library building. Who suffers from this? Well, currently, we witness many young people's programs that are over capacity, with strollers jammed into the inadequate space. Class groups do not have adequate space to run the types of programs that should be available. Furthermore, as is well understood in city communities, libraries fulfill a social service benefit, often providing for those with the most needs among us. For example, those who do not have computers at home, or perhaps the internet, require the library. The library is a hub for information for marginalized groups here in the town. Newcomers in our very large Mennonite community are part of this, as well as low-income citizens. These members are not playing hockey at the underutilized arenas. Is this a digression? Not really, since the town knows full well that tens of thousands could be saved each summer if the rinks were closed. I state this because this is a question of priorities. Whose needs are being served over time? The town indicates plans for a survey upcoming to assess people's thoughts about the library. However, the notion of a survey is highly problematic. Will the survey detail the lost revenues each year? Will the survey pose the question in a manner that details the possibilities for government and private funding? Furthermore, who has access to the voting? If electronic, then the more marginalized communities, most especially Mennonites, for instance, will not be able to access the voting process. Their needs are being minimized in this environment. Finally, I am here because the terms of reference that are being put forward this evening are problematic. Mainly, this has to do with the narrow scope. On page one, it basically excludes discussion of the library in any meaningful way. When people suggested a committee at the roundtable, most of us did not request such a committee with limited terms of, of reference and vision. We want the town to truly engage committed citizens in meaningful planning for the future of the town. This meager next step, i.e. the terms of reference, fails to respect those of us who care about the town, and most especially, those who wish to see Elmer flourish with a cultural hub in its downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Normally, I don't comment on, on delegation, but I do want to make a few comments. First of all, I'd like to thank Cynthia for making those comments about the cultural hub and the vision. Those are exactly the comments that I made ad infinitum ten years ago, in terms of creating a cultural hub next to the Old Town, including the Old Town Hall. So I'm pleased to hear that that kind, kind of vision is still alive amongst the people of the town. I do want to comment about the nature of the roundtable being an insulting kind of proposal. I think rather it was praiseworthy to reach out to the citizens to ask their opinion, the same with, you know, the, the, the idea of it being suspicious, but there was, everything was laid up, up front, and, you know, I think I would rather commend staff for bringing this issue up, so that the people can come forward and present their views. So anyway, thank you, Cynthia, for those comments. Any questions or comments from council? None, all right. Next delegation is Pauline Krigsman regarding the importance of maintaining the Old Town Hall Theater.
Actually, the appointed person for A-PAC, I registered because we didn't know who it was. Susan Morrell has been voted in the library committee and on A-PAC.
Okay. I don't think everybody heard this, if you're going to repeat your name, or give us your name.
Hi, I'm Susan Morrell, and as Pauline mentioned, if you may not have heard her, recently retired from Elgin County Library, a longtime member of the Elmer Performing Arts Council, and more recently, the newly revived Kids and Company. So I just wanted to come tonight to show you that as part of Elmer Performing Arts Council, we are obviously very interested in the next steps that the town is taking, and wanted to give you a little background for those councillors and, and staff members that perhaps aren't aware. A-PAC actually began, A-PAC, short for Elmer Performing Arts Council, began in nineteen-eighty-eight, and has been bringing world-class entertainers to Elmer and area ever since. One of the first performances that we hosted was Letters from Wingfield Farm. You may be familiar with that. Typically, we provide musical entertainment, but we've included popular acts like Rod Beatty's Wingfield. Well, later in our twenty-four, twenty-five season this year, coincidentally, Rod is returning with a new show entitled Saving Ed, different characters but similar style. Rod is just one of countless entertainers who love to perform at the Old Town Hall. Juno Award winners, local musicians, up-and-coming acts, all love the acoustics and the ambiance of the hall. We attract local and area patrons to our venue, but also from further afield. We've had people come from the U.S., up by Ottawa, all over southern Ontario. All of them admire the beautiful venue and love the musicians and entertainers that we bring to Elmer. We actually brought what we call rack cards that have our twenty-four, twenty-five season. I'm not trying to, well, I am trying to encourage you to come out if you, but anyway, you are welcome to take a rack card to see some of the musicians that we're bringing. We were very fortunate, I'm just adding to my notes, to have Dan Mangan. I don't know if anybody is familiar with that name, but apparently, he is the next hot thing in Canada, and we just lucked in by booking him for our October show. And also, the recent reintroduction of Kids and Company is bringing kids entertainers to our town, and this has been very successful so far. We're looking forward to the shows next year as well. So the A-PAC committee members would like to thank Elmer Town Council and staff for hosting the roundtable discussion that was held in May. We felt that there was good attendance, many valuable points were brought forward. I understand that there can be more that is done, more that can be said, but that was a start. We appreciate the discussion on the terms of reference for the Old Town Hall Advisory Committee has been brought forward to this meeting tonight. We believe this is a positive step in moving ahead with concerns and considerations for the future of the hall. A-PAC is also looking forward to some resolution of the insurance issues that current user groups face. We feel that the Town of Elmer benefits a great deal from having the Old Town Hall as a municipally-owned facility. It was restored through efforts of the townspeople for that purpose, and the citizens of the Town of Elmer and surrounding area all have equal access and have benefited a great deal from this. We realize that there are building maintenance issues to consider. However, we would like to believe that with advisory committee and other interested townspeople, some of those issues can be overcome. The Old Town Hall is a jewel in this town, the envy of other towns, and we appreciate the positive steps that staff and council are taking in its regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any question, comments from council? Seeing none, we have resolutions to...
Yes.
Have received for information, both presentations.
That the delegation from Cynthia Grant regarding the Old Town Hall and the Elmer Library be received for information. And that the delegation from Pauline Krigsma...
Susan Morrell.
Susan Morrell, regarding the importance of maintaining the Old Town Hall Theater as a municipally-owned facility, be received for information.
Mover and secondor, Deputy Mayor Barber, Councillor Dussroux. All those in favor, as carried. We will have five point three, and then we'll take a short comfort break, but we'll have five point three first. Do you have a resolution?
That report Clerk twenty-five dash twenty-four entitled Terms of Reference, Old Town Hall Advisory Committee be received for information, and that council approves the draft terms of reference for the establishment of an Old Town Hall Advisory Committee, and that council directs staff to prepare an amendment to the appointment bylaw for consideration at a future meeting.
Mover and secondor, Councillor Chapman, Councillor Oslach.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Susan, Pauline, and Cynthia, which attended tonight to speak to this matter. The, the terms of reference is before council today. This was a recommendation we received at the, at the open meeting at the Old Town Hall. Our hope is that this committee will facilitate the exchange of ideas between the, the user groups of the Old Town Hall and staff, help us enhance programming and utilization of the Old Town Hall, as well as promote the facility to the community. The, the terms of reference are before you. If you have any questions about them, I'd be happy to answer them. It is a, we're recommending three members of the... It is, we're recommending three members of the community representing music, acting, and the literary field be appointed by council. We would do a public request for applications for that and bring them to council for consideration, likely in early September. And then we'd also have two members of council sitting on this committee as well. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel. Consulor Dussrouzi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not really, maybe some questions, I guess we'll see. I've had a few passionate residents come to me regarding this report with concerns they had and my thoughts on those concerns, but I did promise them that I would address them publicly for them on their behalf. There's three concerns. So the first concern is the committee composition. Their concern was that instead of three reps, they were suggesting five. My consensus of the report and what was proposed was that a smaller committee allows for more efficiency, and I did tell these members that, like all committee meetings, it is open to the public. So just because there is three reps and then two council members who are voting members, the meetings themselves should be open to anyone who wishes to, you know, offer suggestions or attend. The second one was the length of the term. The two years concerned them. Their impression was that it would take that long to see progress, and my input to them was that what I foresee happening is that any progress or progress that we wish to have come forth will be dependent on the committee itself. It's not just because it's two years of a term that we're going to wait that long to see progress or any type of resolutions. It's really going to come down to the progress that the committee makes and the efficiency of the committee. And the third and last concern that they had was hosting another open meeting. They thought that was quite valuable. And again, my point was that's an excellent consideration for this new committee to discuss. So it's an item that perhaps this new committee could discuss once constructed, I guess. So with that, I'll leave that with this council, and if they have any questions or wish to speak to that, feel free.
Okay. Consulor Ozlach.
Your worship, council committees of council are normally four years?
Committees of council are appointed by council for four years, however, the appointments can change. That's part of the procedural bylaw. It does say in 13-3 in the procedural bylaw that committee membership may be changed by adoption of council. Any other comments? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, your worship. I think the draft reference terms are reasonable, and it's a good place to start.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, so seeing none. Did you, before I move on, Consulor Dussrouzi, the comments that you made, did you want to make any of them an amendment, or are they just kind of comments such?
I wanted to, I promised these residents that I would bring them to the table publicly just for discussion. I would love to hear council's feedback on those, like if they felt my analysis was correct, or if they agree that maybe we should increase the representation, or like, I would just like some feedback from council.
Okay. Consulor Rawi.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I think it's a fantastic idea, but I would almost be for dropping one council and adding another public to it myself, keeping it still that five, but one council can represent the council, in my opinion.
And if it says council on the term, I think staff here, we intend to be agile and quick on this issue and work with this group, so even the insurance issue that was raised at that roundtable meeting, we want to examine that and get it before this committee quite quickly for review. So although the two-year term seems short, we do like to move quick.
So Consulor Chapman.
Through you, your worship. I think it should stay at three public members and two council members, because there's always the chance that one council member cannot make a meeting, so therefore, they would, we would be missing one, and keeping it at five, it helps the flow move more quickly.
I don't see anybody making an amendment to any of the resolutions, so we're going to leave the resolution as it is at this point. Did you want a further comment? Consulor Dussrouzi.
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have a member of the public who wishes to speak, even though it's not a public delegation, are we permitted to allow them to speak to something if they have a question?
Well, I guess that's up to the chair, and I, seeing Cynthia back there with her hand waving, I just, yes, Cynthia, you have a question?
Would it be possible?
We need the microphone, I'm sorry.
Would it be possible to make a small amendment to the terms of reference on page one, removing the prohibition from any consideration of the library and capitals? Maybe someone has the document in front of them?
Well, yeah, we do. Thank you, Cynthia. That would be up to council to make amendment motion for that.
It's a small deletion, because for many who attended the roundtable, they see the issues as being-
Okay, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, Cynthia. I think part of the reason, and staff can correct me if I'm going in the wrong direction, but I think part of the reason why we're excluding discussion of the library is that we do not want this committee to get bogged down on one item being the library. The council already has a, you know, a procedure, I don't know what you call a situation dealing with the library, that says that we will not take that situation up again unless we have movement from the public for fundraising. So it's best if we leave the library out of the whole consideration of how we deal with the Old Town Hall.
And if I could just add, the mayor and I had a very productive meeting on Monday with representatives from the library group. So certainly, I don't want to give a message that there's opposition, we're talking, and we're, we've committed to continue to update them on aspects. So that, that's kind of, I don't want the public to think that we aren't meeting with the group and advancing matters.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. Certainly, we are in discussions, I am in discussions with members of the ALZ, I think, the Elmer Library Expansion, whatever that stands for, that group, and so we're working with the library. So it isn't something that's lost in terms of that building. All right. Counsel, any move here? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, your worship. Just to follow up to that last conversation, the next line says, "This may be amended by council, referring this matter to the committee for consideration at a future date." So it isn't closing discussions about the library, it's just not making it a pivotal part of that process.
Anything else from council? Seeing nothing, and just to, just as a matter of information in terms of the council representatives, what I will be doing is surveying council members as to who wish to be on this committee, and form a, according to our procedural bylaw, form a small select committee to make the recommendations to council for the two members, and that'll be coming up shortly. Okay. Right. Any other questions or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? As carried, thank you. And we will take a short comfort break, and for those of you watching out there, it'll be five minutes, and we'll be back. All right, councillors, welcome back. Item six, Consent Agenda: Communication and Staff Reports, Resolutions.
That the July 10, 2024 consent agenda be received for information, and that the included recommendations within the staff reports be adopted, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 19, 2024.
Moving second, Consulor Chapman, Consulor Ozlach. Any comments? Questions? Consulor Ozlach.
Well, your worship, when the gas tax change from the old definition?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it was 2022. It's basically the same as, the CCBF is the same as the gas tax, they just changed the name so that it was clear that it's a surplus of funds, not just surplus from gas tax.
Seeing none, all those in favor? As carried, thank you. So we should be six, seven, one? Point four.
Yes, that report fire 06-24 be received for information, and that council confirm that a portion of the 1942 fire truck trust fund be made available through a transfer from trust to the fire operating budget to pay for repairs to the historic fire truck.
Thank you. Actually, 7.1. Moving second, Consulor Van Rees and Consulor Chapman. Questions? Comments? Consulor Van Rees.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. The only, I just have a comment. It's exciting to see that we're going to get, hopefully get that truck up and running for the 150th, which is coming up in, not this weekend, but the following weekend, so it's very exciting.
Yes, Consulor Ozlach.
Your worship, I am older than that fire truck.
You totally, I'm sorry, do what?
I'm older than that fire truck.
I could comment, but I won't. Mr. Chapman.
Just through you, your worship, just a comment. I did see the truck just the other night, and I can't remember what night it was, but it was like quite a surprise and nice to see it on the road.
Yes. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor? As carried, thank you. 7.2, Director of Financial Services Quarterly Report Resolution.
That report finance 16-24 entitled Quarterly Financial Summary Report be received for information.
Moving second, Consulor Dussrouzi, Consulor Rawi. Heather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have anything substantive to add to this report. We're only halfway through the year. However, I did want to note that the expenses for repairs and maintenance on the fire trucks are high to this point. The chief had a lot of inspections that happened. He usually groups them all and does them all in the May-June timeframe, so he doesn't believe that there'll be anything substantially over budget. He believes that it'll be contained within the overall fire budget. I just wanted to note that. Also, the police station had a leak, so that was higher repairs and maintenance in that area. That's now been fixed. I talked to Tyler today, and they've remediated everything that needed to be done there. Also, the streetlights repairs and maintenance are trending higher, and the hydro for streetlights are also trending higher, and that's because we have added some streetlights in Cottonwood and Centennial Estates. So you'll see budget changes for that in 2025. Overall, like I said, no concerns to this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Consulor Ozlach.
Your worship, Heather, to Heather, as a streetlights where- Your worship, Heather, to Heather, as a streetlights were installed in two thousand and sixteen or seventeen, is it paid off yet?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Oslach. I believe that the LED loan is due in twenty twenty nine. Let me just bring it up here. So they're not paid yet.
Here's a further question. The, the cost, the saving of electricity was supposed to be paid off the loan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't here, and I didn't do that analysis, but if you would like me to bring back a report, I don't know how we could get that information, but I could go back to when the LED loan was established to see what the rate of return was on that.
Andy.
I can perhaps comment on it because it's something that's happened at many municipalities that were involved in the LAS switch to LED lights was, there was perhaps an over optimistic amount of savings, but the, what happened after those were put in was the cost of electricity went up significantly. So although there was savings, they didn't view the fact that the cost would go up. So it's more of a cost avoidance situation that most munis-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our April seventeenth meeting of council, I had several questions regarding the details of the GL accounts that are outlined in these financial summaries, and the direction I received from, I believe, the mayor was that the information is appropriate to be brought forth at our finance committee meeting. So again, I've received these financial, this financial summary. I'm not understanding a lot of the accounts that are outlined within them. Are, is the intention still to discuss that in detail at a finance committee meeting?
Heather.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At the finance committee meeting, we discussed bringing the training detail report, which would explain the training detailed accounts that you requested. We're bringing that forward to August fourteenth, if that's satisfactory with council.
Satisfactory, okay.
Just sorry, just to follow up, it wasn't just the training account. There were several GL accounts that I had questions about, so it's going to go over more than just training, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The training and the association fees and dues are all related, so there's four GL accounts that are going to be included in that training report, but they're all related to tuition, training, association fees. They're all interrelated.
Sorry, so if I have questions about other GL accounts, then should I, should I forward them on to the Director of Finance to include within that report, or how would we like to approach that?
Certainly free to ask questions of any staff member. What, what, I'm just trying to understand what it is that you kind of want in terms of explanations of the GL accounts, you know, can you be more specific on that?
Yeah, so reviewing, there's, there's several GL accounts when you look at those summaries, and so a lot of them have just a broad term, right? So my question was, what's, what are the specifics of those accounts, like examples, right? So I can better understand them because providing the information is one thing, but understanding it is another, right? So again, as I said in April, that perhaps this is just a me issue, but I was willing to have that discussion privately with the Director of Finance if it was not a concern of the rest of council, but the direction I received was that it was appropriate information to be brought forth back to the finance committee. So again, I'm just seeking the direction of council. If they feel, if you feel that it's not a necessary discussion item for the committee or for council, I would just like that permission to have that education with the Director of Finance privately or together as a finance committee at the discretion of council.
I'd just suggest that if, if the, certainly, this is a council meeting, it's not a finance committee meeting, but if the finance committee wants to go through all the GLs line by line, we certainly will allow for that. I would recommend that you don't do that because we try to get you out of the weeds and provide high level summaries on it, but if you have any specific questions or want to report on anything like the training, bring it up, and we'll prepare a report for the entire body to see so that everybody receives the same information on it, similar to what we're doing with the training one. But as we get further along, certainly, we do try to get our budget approved before the end of this year. So the sooner we know, the more, the sooner staff can begin that work to provide you the information that you need to make your decisions.
Just to follow up, I, I completely agree. I personally don't see it as a matter for the finance committee. Like, I think if that information is beneficial for, like, the training specifically, if that's beneficial for the committee as a whole, then absolutely bring it forward. But the individual questions that I have about the details of GL accounts, if it's something that's going to congest the committee's time, I have no problem discussing those on my own private time with the Director of Finance. I just want to make sure that that's allowable because I don't want to overstep my role as a councillor. So if somebody could just give me some direction, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I, I'm still not terribly clear on exactly what you want in terms of going through the accounts. I'm looking at the GL accounts, they're numbered, and they have a name, so it gives us a kind of idea of what those accounts are about. So are you trying to pick one account, for example, water purchase primary, which is two million some dollars or something? You would want to know something more specific about that particular line? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so it's basically the details, like in every, every, like, it might not necessarily be every budgetary item, but there's several in there that I'm not quite, I'm not understanding what exactly they are. So for, for staff to ask me specifically, as a member of this council, to approve something I don't understand, I don't think that's ethical. I feel like I should know what I'm approving. So like I said, I, I can make a list, I can go through it item by item, and whatever ones I have questions about, I can write them out and provide them to staff if that's what council's direction is. If council's direction is for me to just have that conversation just one-on-one with the director, I'm fine with that as well. It's completely at the discretion of council.
I guess what I'm trying to avoid is monopolization of staff time. I think if it's important enough for you, for you to find out, I think the proper place to do that is probably in the finance committee. And so, you know, if we get bogged down in the finance committee, I guess we get bogged down, but I think everybody should hear the same information at the same time, rather than, you know, you're going to Heather with a list of things, and then maybe a week later you have a list of different things or whatever, but I think the proper place to do that is in the finance committee itself.
So we'll be doing that at the August fourteenth meeting, then?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else?
Or, or should, sorry, should we, we maybe should put that to the one when we start discussing the operational budget. I don't, I think August fourteenth we're targeted, we have the training one, but I think we're more targeted on capital at that meeting. So, but either way, yes.
Whichever budget is going to be dealing with operational.
It's easy for staff to put those lists up and scroll through it, and council to identify any items they want more, more questions answered to.
Okay. All right, good. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, it's carried, thank you. Weighted seven point three, downtown facade improvement grant application resolution.
That report clerk twenty four dash twenty four regarding downtown facade improvement grant application, community improvement plan be received for information, and that council approve a grant to the faithful or fifty percent of the project cost up to the Elmer CIP maximum funding amount of five thousand dollars.
Moving second, councillor Rozier, deputy mayor barber. Council, I don't know, you have a report first.
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council may be familiar with this type of report. We had one earlier this year. So this is a business located just across the road at twenty nine Talbot Street West. They are relocating from Saint Thomas. It is a hair cutting barber shop establishment. They are doing some work related to new signage, decals, barber pullout front, which is already installed, as well as the front step and the front door. The total project cost do exceed ten thousand dollars. There was two applications made, but we are recommending they be considered as one. The total project cost will be exceeding ten thousand dollars, and we will be looking at the specific amount of that through the building permit process, which they're in the process of. More than likely, the, the grants will be at that maximum amount of five thousand dollars. That's what we're seeking council approval for today. In terms of the requirements of the CIP, the application meets requirements in terms of beautification of the downtown and basically improvement to the local businesses, and council noted on the last grant application the desire to see certification through the Ontario government for the actual operation of the service, and that was submitted with this application as well. So if there is any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council. No questions or comments? Councillor Rahi.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe to Heather. Where does the money come from that we used to pay for these grants, and how much do we have in that account?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and to councillor Rahi. These grants would be paid out of the discretionary operating reserve. So currently, right now, there is five hundred and thirty four thousand in that reserve. After the funded projects this year, we're expecting it to be around a hundred thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand, when we're, we're going to suggest some movements in that reserve, and there is some projects that are currently being paid out of that reserve. So there's enough money in that reserve to pay for this.
And Heather, where does the revenue from that account come from?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The revenue comes from a few different places. So we, we move elections money to that reserve. That pays for the election every four years, so that comes through the tax levy. We also, I have the discretion to be able to take some of the surplus, and they have in the past put into that reserve. So basically, the discretionary operating reserve is for items that aren't necessarily capital or necessarily levied every year. It's like a one-time, you know, expense that doesn't need to be levied every year, basically.
Sorry, like a piggy bank.
Piggy bank, sure.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you. We should, just a quick comment. It's good to see a business doing something to improve the, the look of the downtown, and every little bit helps.
Yes. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, it's carried, thank you. Letter from the East Elgin Community Complex Board requiring actions on the sound system. We have a resolution.
That the council of the town of Elmer approve a capital budget amendment for an additional four thousand two hundred and eighty seven dollars and fifty cents per municipal partner.
Moving second, councillor Oslach, councillor Chapman. You have a report?
Mr. Mayor, I have no report. As stated in the letter, we're really just looking for a capital budget amendment for the, the sound system. It's four thousand two hundred and eighty seven dollars.
And all of you are at the complex meetings, you kind of know what the, that issue is. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor. It's carried, thank you. Seven point five, Canada Day twenty twenty five joint application resolution.
That the council of the town of Elmer direct staff to participate in a joint funding application to the Canadian Heritage Celebrate Canada funding program for Canada Day celebrations in twenty twenty five and provide confirmation to the ECC board.
Moving secondary, deputy mayor, have a report on that? No.
No. I do not.
That was, that was discussed at the board as well, so. Any comments, questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, it's carried, thank you. Seven six, budget survey revision to question six, resolution.
That report clerk twenty three dash twenty four entitled twenty twenty five budget survey revisions to question six be received for information.
Moving second, councillor Rozier, councillor Rahi. And we do have a report on that.
Through the mayor to council, thank you for your feedback at the last finance committee meeting regarding the budget survey. I did do a review of the question, which really the discussion focused on, which was question six. The report is before you, proposing a, really, a revision of the question based on the top responses from the previous year, so we'd be looking to what our residents told us last year were the important issues to them. Definitely heard your feedback about the clarity of the question, made some revisions specifically to that, kind of the format of it as well. We did discuss a ranked question at the last meeting. I, I really don't recommend those, just in the, with the limitations of the system we use. And I, our other options before us tonight, if you don't like this new question, would be to really convert the entire question to an open response. I think that might be appropriate. We already have the open response component, but we'd just be reducing it, or we could maintain the previous question from last year. Just, this would be the second year with the question, so we, we could get some year-over-year results to kind of see the value there. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To staff, you know, I think reducing the number of options, I think, or condensing, and I should say, was definitely, in my eyes, a better idea. As I questioned at our last meeting, the purpose of this survey is a budget survey, so two specific items on here, improving access to healthcare and social services and increasing house and option, housing options and affordability. What budgetary amendments can we make? So let's say we get that feedback back from our residents that those are priorities, because in my eyes, their housing and healthcare are provincial matters. So what are we doing at the municipal level in our budget? Like, how is it going to impact our budget? If that's the feedback we get, what, what are we going to do with that to change our budget to reflect that? Can somebody answer that?
Just, I, I believe I did address that in the report, specifically that this is really one of our major community consultation efforts throughout the year, so like, the scope of it has always been beyond just strict budget decisions, which is really the purpose of this question. I think I detailled it in the report. We're looking to see what the top issues are for our residents here. With the revised question, we're looking at what they told us last year, and we're seeing if that has changed this year. So the, the scope is, it is the budget survey, but it's, we're looking for more feedback from our residents than strictly service level questions.
One comment I have about the health, if I may, first, is that it used to be that the town of Elmer had a budget for supporting doctors coming to the town of Elmer. It was a fair budget, I think it was fifteen or twenty thousand, which would account for recruitment and that kind of thing. So if we're really serious, if we found that the populace really wanted us to do something health-wise, even though it is a provincial concern, we could include monies in the budget for, for health. So there is a bit of a connection there. You had another question?
Yeah, the next question I had was just about more explanation between, so the questions have been condensed, but then they've been reworded as well. So I just have questions about the terminology for just a couple of them. So investing and planning in new public facilities and infrastructure, can you explain like an example of that? Like, is that a library, or like, what, what is that budget, or what is that answer specifically?
So to just address it generally, why we made the terminology, council gave us the feedback that perhaps high-speed internet, that wasn't enough information for a resident to kind of understand what the direction would be if they selected that. So by operationalizing it, we're hoping that the residents would be able to better understand what they're selecting in the list. So for example, the first one, which is investing in new public infrastructure and facilities, that was a theme that was specifically in the, the open responses. Council would be familiar with them from last year. So, and- So, and we're not looking to tell residents exactly what that means. We just, we're wanting them to communicate to us what their priorities are for the town. So we could expand those questions, but I just, I don't believe it would be effective. We're giving residents the opportunity for open-ended feedback in the next question to tell us exactly what they want. And in this question, we're really looking for more quantitative data about priorities across the town.
One more question really, then I'll go to someone else.
Well, I think, I have several questions, because I'm a resident, like even though I'm a councillor, I'm still a resident. So I would fill out this survey, and with you not being able to explain even that first line to me what it is, I don't know what it is. So how can I make a justifiable answer if I don't know what these items are? And that's not the only one on here. There's several other ones that are more vague than direct. And this was exactly what I addressed with council prior, that even though there was more items last time and there's less now, there's still that vagueness. Like, it's not clear and direct. So if I don't understand certain ones, they may be important to me, but I don't know what you're asking me, so I'm not going to select that one. So I think making sure that these answers are just very direct, black and white, exactly what they are, I think would go a long way. I don't agree with what's being, sorry, with what was presented originally. I think the recommended option is good. I think it still needs to be a little bit more clear. I'm not, because I'm not even getting any direction from you, just from the first question I asked. So I think the recommended option is good, but it still needs to be reworded to be a little bit more clear and direct.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
I think you could go around and around and around, trying to get perfect wording. I think the questions, as they're posed, give the people an opportunity to think outside the box and perhaps come up with creative ideas. And that's really the intent of the survey, to get the feedback of the people. If we pigeonhole it to specific things, you're almost formatting what the answer is going to be. By keeping it open-ended, it allows the people to think and come up with their own solutions and ideas.
Chapman?
Through you, Worship. I tend to agree with Counselor Barber. When I read this question, investing and planning for new public facilities and infrastructure, that opens up a whole array of items that it could be. It's not saying, oh, we're going to do this. It's like, give us some information. What would you like to see? I like the questions. I've read them several times, and I have no problem answering them.
Okay.
Just one last brief question. So if we don't have a definitive explanation of what these are, how are we, as council, able to take the data that's received and actually implement them into tangible budgetary items or tangible advocacy? Like, if it's just a vague question that potentially could mean various things, how are we supposed to take that and do anything with it? I genuinely don't understand that. I'm sorry.
My comment would be, if I'm looking at these, when I'm looking at them, as Counselor Chapman has talked about it, we're looking at these as general priorities. And you could break down every single one of them into specifics. There's not a single one there that you couldn't break down into specifics if you wanted to. I mean, you're investing in planning for new public facilities, you could list all of them. That would become 10 questions. Improving access to health, you could list a whole bunch of things. Attracting and supporting local businesses, which kind? An industry, which kind? You could get very specific in all of them. That's not what the question is asking. It's asking some, a general trend or feeling amongst the populace. So I have no issue with those items right there. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So we have a resolution before you. All those in favor of the recommendation? Opposed? One. As Carrie, thank you. New business and matters of urgency. Reading of bylaws and proceedings are on. We have a number of bylaws?
The council gives three readings to and approves bylaw 50-24 being a bylaw to amend bylaw number 57-99, which, apologies, just one moment. So that reading will not be included in the bylaw. So we will go to bylaw 52-24 being a bylaw to amend, bylaw number 57-99 being the zoning bylaw of the Town of Elmer, ZBA 04-24, 345 Talbot Street West. Bylaw 53-24 being a bylaw to adopt a municipal alcohol policy. Bylaw 54-24 being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario for Canada Community Building Funding. And bylaw 55-24 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on June 19th, 2024.
Moving in secondary, Counselor Chapman, Counselor Ozil. Now, the two zoning amendments were stricken from this, weren't they? Yes. Anywhere? Any questions, comments? Seeing that, do you have a question?
Just to confirm, number one and number two are both in motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of the resolution? As Carrie, thank you. Inquiries by members? Counselor Chapman?
Through you, Worship. I have an inquiry. The summer meetings starting at 5:30 is, it's a challenge to make the 5:30 appointment, and I was hoping to propose that we change it to 6 o'clock, to give us an extra half hour to finish work, get something to eat, and arrive on time.
Sounds like a reasonable request. Does council have any issues with starting at 6 instead of 5:30? Don't see any issues, so the next one will be 6 o'clock. Any other inquiries by members? Statements and committee reports? Counselor Venres?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to give a quick update on Project Lifesaver, if I can. I think a question was brought up at a couple of meetings ago that I wasn't, unfortunately, here about what happened with the money and if it just disappeared. So the money did not disappear. We've been able to collect quite a bit. We're actually, we have enough funds that we can purchase, I believe, three units currently. We're just waiting for some of the agreements to be finalized. Obviously, when you're dealing with multiple police services and other agencies, there's a lot, a bit of behind-the-scenes work. So as soon as, we're very close to having that stuff finalized, and as soon as it is, we're going to be able to purchase the equipment. Training's already been done, and then we'll start advertising, we'll start marketing, letting people know that this service is available and get families signed up.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Counselor Ozil?
Adopt a park. The Legion has adopted a cenote, and we're missing probably 15 or 20 plants. They've been stolen by the public. I've replaced them several times at the Canadian Tire.
So people come along and just pull the plants out of the ground?
That's right. And take them home.
They must be good plants. That's unfortunate. Committee, any other? Counselor Rozier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to announce the effect of this evening. I have been appointed to sit on the Ontario PC Women in Politics Board. This board collaborates closely with the provincial legislator, focusing on networking, empowering women in leadership positions, supporting educational initiatives. I am grateful for the opportunity presented and eager to represent our community in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Anyone else? Counselor Venres?
Sorry, again, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to announce again, we've talked about the 150th anniversary for Elmer Fire. So that's coming up on July 20th, from 11 to 3 at the Fire Hall. So it'll be great to see everybody out there. Come on out and enjoy some of the festivities, and it'll be great to see the public out there and celebrate 150 years of Elmer Fire.
Okay. Thank you for saying that, Counselor Venres. I was going to, but no, I don't have. July 20th, a week from Saturday, see you all out there. Anyone else? There is no report of the mayor? Notice of motion? No notice of motion? Meeting closed to the public resolutions.
The council moves into a meeting closed to the public at 7:46 PM to discuss the following matters. Chief Administrative Officer and Manager of Planning Development report regarding an update on development issues at 3:00. Chief Administrative Officer Report, CAO 35-24, update regarding ECC. Chief Administrative Officer Report, 36-24, litigation update. Chief Administrative Officer Report, 37-24, respecting a industrial land sale matter. And that considerations of these items is closed to the public pursuant to section 239 CE FNK of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, as the subject matter pertains to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be implied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Moving in secondary, Counselor Rozier, Counselor Rahi. All those in favor? As Carrie, there'll be a brief recess. All those in favor, it's carried. There'll be a brief recess.
Back everybody, we have a resolution.
Right, yeah.
That council rise from the meeting closed to the public at 8:38 PM and reports the following. Received for information, the CAO informational report respecting 335 John Street South, and report CAO 36-24 respecting a litigation update, and that council gave direction to the chief administrative officer and mayor regarding, report CAO 35-24 respecting an update on EECC negotiations, and that council gave direction to the chief administrative officer respecting report CAO 37-24 respecting a industrial land sale matter.
Librarian Secunder, Counselor Rahi, and Counselor Chapman, all those in favor and carried, and a resolution to adjourn.
Counsel adjourn at 8:39 PM.
Librarian Secunder, Counselor Chapman, Counselor Disrozier, all those in favor carried, thank you very much counselors.